All right, may I get a motion that we only discuss those four items we went into closed session for? One item under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1 Appointments, Town Manager. Two items under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A3, Consideration of the Acquisition or Disposition of Real Property, Dora Highway and Sixth Street Northwest. And one item under Virginia Code 2.3-2.2-3711A8, Consultation with Legal Counsel.
So move.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
All righty, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Ratliff and invocation by Councilman East, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd like to join us in prayer, please bow your head at this time. Heavenly Father, we give thanks for your presence in our daily lives and your continued grace and mercy. And we ask this evening that you would guide us and grant us wisdom in all matters. In your name we pray. Amen.
Okay, all right. First, I'd like to welcome the, all of our guests and visitors online also. Thank you for being here. I think there's, there's no modification for public session, so we'll start with our presentations. They'll be at fifteen minutes. First one that we have is "The Knox Box" by Chief Connor and Sonya Ramsey. And why do I like saying Knox Box?
It's just fun.
Okay. In March of 2023, the Pulaski Police Department and the Pulaski Fire Department worked together to introduce to the town of Pulaski residents the Knox Home Box and Knox Home Box Grant Programs. The Knox Home Box allows rapid access to gain entry to residents in case of emergency. It is a life-saving tool that not only provides for the reduction of property damage by forcefully making entry into a home, but also saves precious seconds or minutes of time that could be the difference in life and death. We have made presentations to various organizations and groups such as the Lions Club, the Senior Center, Pulaski Warton Road Warton Club, Apartment Complex Management, as well as other large groups and individuals. Our goal is to spread the word about not only the program, but also the grant program we have instilled to provide this service to those who may not have the funds to purchase it for themselves. Each unit costs $230, which is the cost of the unit to the Town of Pulaski Fire Department, who has graciously stepped up to be the leader of the program for the whole county of Pulaski. Anyone in the county may purchase for themselves or their loved ones a Knox Home Box for the price we pay for it. The Pulaski Fire Department will then get with the fire department in charge for that area of the county and have the box installed. Each fire department will then have the master key in their vehicle for access in emergency situations. Once a Knox Home Box is installed, the information is passed along to the Pulaski County Joint 911 Center, who will associate the Knox Home Box with the address and will allow emergency communicators the ability to quickly relay that information to the responders. Feeling strongly about the ability to save lives, the fire department and Pulaski Police Department Community Resources Office have worked together to purchase five units to be loaned out to our seniors and disabled persons in need. The units were quickly loaned out to five residents of the town of Pulaski. The residents must show a financial as well as a medical need, with qualifications being sixty years or older and living alone, and/or disability or medical condition and being alone often, and also meeting the guidelines for eligibility to receive SNAP benefits. So this is for the grant program itself. Of course, in the town of Pulaski, that's approximately 25% of our population. We have received donations in the amounts of $633 from American Legion Post 7, $1,000 from Pulaski Warton Club, and $200 from Dublin Moose Lodge, which has allowed us to purchase eight more boxes for our grant program. We do ask that if the box is no longer needed by the individual or the family, they return the box to us to be reissued to another individual in need. As a matter of fact, today, Chief Connor went out and took one off of a lady who ended up going into a retirement facility. So that'll go back into the grant program. All applications for the program, as well as all donations, payments, and purchases are handled through the administrative manager to the Chief of Police in the Town of Pulaski Finance Office. It is our desire to have the Knox Home Box on as many homes in this town as we can as another tool for the safety, security, and well-being of our residents. Now, the Town of Pulaski Fire Chief Jeff Connor will demonstrate the box and how it is used at this time.
So I've got one for y'all to pass around. So it's a two-part system. As you can see, it's got a door hanger. It can also be mounted through the box to a wall, stairwell, something. So we take our key, that is key just for Pulaski County. No other jurisdiction has this key. And we open it, we put your key in it, so in the event of emergency, we can access it, get into your house without damaging your door. For security of the key, each one of the towns' trucks that has a key is outfitted with this. It takes an individual's PIN number. Everybody's got a unique PIN number. You have to put it in, it unlocks, comes out, and these lights start flashing until you put it back in. So then you put the key back in, and everything is timestamped and dated. So I can tell you at four o'clock in the morning, Mr. Clark takes key out. Don't take the key out. So that way, that's the security for us and for the person that has the box. So this is updated probably once a month with software. It is hooked to a system. It's live. So we know at any given point, once this thing hooks up, when a key has been taken out. If you're familiar with the commercial Knox Boxes, this is the same thing. This is how we get into businesses without damaging doors, and that's what we want to do to a home in the event of emergency. Now, if it's a dire enough emergency, we're going to get into the home regardless. But if we can prevent some damage, that's good.
So does whoever's first on scene is the one that has jurisdiction to get into the house? Because you said you was going with, going through 911 communications, correct?
Correct. So if this is a, say we have a call in the town of Pulaski, we're going to be the ones that access the Knox Box. Now, everybody in the county, all departments, have Knox Box keys. So say we're out on a call, and we have to call Draper in for another call. They would have access to that Knox Box, as we would. And vice versa, if we go to Dublin, we're going to have access to the Knox Box.
Okay.
Every county vehicle, and that was just approved in this year, CIP was to get one of those secure units.
But it doesn't have to be a captain, or it's, it's the first person on scene that has that in their vehicle?
Correct. So in PFD right now, it's only the career staff, the part-timers that have a code, because we're more than likely to be in the trouble first.
Right.
Some of your volunteer departments, it's going to be whoever that chief wants to have a code.
You have a significant area to serve in the county as well.
Correct.
As your first due.
Yes, ma'am.
So anyone, that same key is needed for.
Yeah, that key is good for county and the two towns.
Okay.
And originally, a couple of years ago, everyone had their own separate key. Well, the Town of Pulaski had sixty keys, or sixty boxes. Dublin had a few, and the county had a few. So it just made sense to go onto the towns and be one, one unit.
I'm at you the criminal offense right now. When you check, the fireman checks that key out of that box right there, does he have a specific code? And let's just say something happens that that key's not returned, you are able to go back and see who checked that key out?
Yeah, every person has a unique code. I won't say what the code is, but you probably got an idea of what it is. Unique to everybody. So we do know who that person is. Because their code, well, their number and their name are attached in the system. So it actually pulls up their name, not the code entered.
Is every?
I'm sorry. Yes, everybody has their own PIN. Nobody has the same.
Is every fireman going to have that code, or just a specific one on a shift like a captain or lieutenant?
So for the town, all of our career, our officers, and our part-timers have it. For the other departments, that's going to be their chief's discretion. But then their department is liable for any incidents.
And so if someone was interested in getting one of these items, either through a grant, or if they were willing to pay for it themselves, who would they contact?
Most of that has been done through me.
Okay.
So they can just contact me at the police department. I help them fill out the application if needed. And if they want to pay for it themselves, they just write a check. We have, actually, finance has set up a separate account for the Knox Box programs. So any, any donations that come in for that are paid out of that one account. Anyone who's paying for it themselves all goes into that one account, and then we pay the invoices out of that.
Great, thank you.
How are we, how are we advertising that, getting the word out?
I've done multiple presentations, like I said, at various clubs, at the senior center. Anywhere that we can get the word out, we do it at the triad events. Every time we have a triad event, we bring that, Facebook, anything that we can do to try to get the program out.
And that's why I have them here tonight.
Right.
With the hope that there will be coverage, both not only on our Facebook account with the televising of the meeting, but that the reporters who
How, how?
will also put an article in.
How beneficial are the mailers in the water bill? Would that be an option?
That could be an option. The real issue is going to be supply and demand. Because unless we get a lot of donations, we're going to be limited in terms of the number that we can purchase in order to have the grant program. But clearly, those who can afford and who want it, it makes it relatively easy, because then we can get additional supplies as we get additional funds, whether it be a pay yourself or donations.
And we are trying to work with some of the apartment complexes, specifically, we've talked with Washington Square, to see if we could possibly get, like, instead of having one on every door of the individuals, have one on each building, so that there's one master key in that building that will fit all the doors in that building. I know right after, well, I guess it was right before we talked to them about that, they had had the fire at Washington Square, and I don't know how many, how many doors did you guys have to kick in to get the people out?
Oh, I think we damaged six doors on that building.
Here's a good thing about that right there. I spent many years patrolling. Here's the issue. If you have an elderly person, if you have a handicapped person, it doesn't matter. We would get calls, two or three times a night to go check, because no one answered the phone, no one would come to the door. We only had one option. If we didn't have anybody had a key, was to kick that door in. You're looking probably five, $600 right now to replace the door. And that goes on a lot in the town and county, a lot more than you think, at two or three o'clock in the morning. A lot.
Yeah, and even aside from that, the worst thing is, I know, I did a presentation for the Lions Club, and one of the gentlemen there, I'd known for years, he used to be an officer in Rattler, and he, during the height of COVID, had gotten COVID. And it took them forty-five minutes to get into his home after he called 911. And then he ended up on a ventilator for four months. So it really is a life-saving technique. Now, he was one of the first ones who actually did.
Where is it actually mounted on the front door? Is it, where is it actually mounted on the front of your house?
It can be mounted over the top of your door, which is, it comes with this. Or it can be hard mounted, like, to the side.
Got you.
Yeah, so we've got one resident in town where it's actually mounted to her porch. Because the way her door is set up in the jam, it actually won't close with the hanger on it.
Okay.
And that's a service that the fire department also provides. They actually come out and mount it for you.
And let's get one thing perfectly clear. It's a one-time fee, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that one, one people on stake?
No, 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 no. If, if you purchase this item for $230, then that belongs to you. It belongs to your family. If you move from Pulaski County to Montgomery County, Montgomery County has a separate key. So you would just need to get with whoever's in charge of their Knox
Program.
Knox Box program.
They just change the core out.
They change the core. You know, once it's, if someone were to go into a retirement home, or something happened, they move in with a relative, the family then can use this for someone else in the family, but it is their property at that point. The only thing with the grant program, if, if we give it to a resident, which, again, that's only for Town of Pulaski residents. The, the box is available to anyone in the county, but the grant's only for town residents. And if we do that, we do ask that either the person, if they are capable, or the family, return that to us so that it can be given out to another person. That's, yeah, if you purchase it, it's yours.
Will the police department be able to get into it? Because when we, when I did 911 dispatch, we had to wait on a key holder for like a wellness check or something like that.
So currently, it's more of a yes and no. They do have access to a key. Their quickest route is just to call the fire department.
It is highly unlikely that they would ever use that key, because they do not have one in vehicles like.
Right.
So the thought process is, with the 911 dispatcher, when they get an emergency call, it's going to pop up, because once these are installed, we send all that information to the 911 center. It's going to pop up that they have this box. So they're going to immediately know to go ahead and dispatch a fire unit, because the fire unit needs to get on scene with that key. So if EMS is sent, the fire unit can respond, so they have that key. It would be very unlikely that the police department would ever actually use their key.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all so much.
You go.
All right, our next presentation is the Finance Department update. Jackie Morse.
Mr. Mayor, I want to say that Jackie and her staff have spent the last year doing some amazing things to generate the revenue that is due the county, excuse me, the town. And we have implemented a number of techniques that were not used previously. So I asked Jackie to come this evening and to give you all a blow-by-blow of all the things that they've been doing, because this is a lot of the, what I call, the behind-the-scenes work that people never hear about or see. And I thought it would be appropriate, not only for you as a council to hear this, but for those who do watch our Facebook or view it later, to know some of the great things that are happening. So with that as an intro, Jackie, tell them all the good things that are going on.
Before I get started in that, I want to introduce, come on up, our new Assistant Finance Director. This is Dustin Davis. He joined the town in May, and he currently lives in the town of Pulaski with his wife Laura and daughter Lily. He has hit the ground running, has been training, been learning a lot, very quick to learn. And he's currently taking over the process of payroll. And he did it pretty much by yourself this time, so he's doing an amazing job. And we're very excited to have him as part of the team in finance.
Congratulations. Welcome forward.
So as Darlene said, we've had a very busy year in finance. To give a little bit of background before I get started in the presentation, the, something that sparked my interest when I first started as Finance Director was the amount of delinquencies that we had with taxes. Upon the retirement of the tax clerk, which was a full-time position, which managed both the real estate and personal property, we looked at that position, reevaluated it, and decided to split the position of real estate and personal property. Upon doing so, there were two full-time positions currently in finance that are account clerks, which are still maintaining that role and the responsibilities that that entails. But Ms. Raquel Poe, who's in the audience, has taken over the real estate tax. And Karen Brooks is, has taken over the personal property. And they both have been hard at work. They have put in a lot of time, a lot of effort, as you're about to see with what I'm to show you. So we'll get started. The first I want to start with is the real estate collection. The collection started with this in July 1st of 2022. We started out by mailing letters, notifying people of the status of their account. They had the option to pay in full, or we do offer payment arrangements on taxes. Ms. Poe does manage those, and currently, we have thirty payment arrangements that people are taking advantage of. We, Ms. Poe did submit thirty-four properties to Sands Anderson, which is our collection attorney. To date, they have eleven properties out of the thirty-four that have been paid in full for delinquent tax that they had. Sixteen properties are still being processed and could potentially be added to the tax sale. Seven properties are ready to go for the tax sale, which we have a date of October 24th of October of this year for the tax sale to be held. Still working out the details with that, but we hope to have a good response with that. So with the total for fiscal year 2023, the total that we collected for delinquent real estate tax was, as you can see, over $140,000. Interest, $83,000, penalty, over $28,000, with a total of $254,231.94. And this is just for the fiscal year 2023. So I did some calculations before I come up, because I was curious to see where we was at with July and August starting in fiscal year. And currently, we have collected over $23,000. Something else that I wanted to start venturing into was liens. The town has had liens for quite some time on properties, whether it be in regards to mowing, demolition. And to my recollection, I couldn't see where any type of collection work had been done on this. And as you see, the balance is quite substantial on these. So in January, I had Ms. Poe and Dana Bishop, currently works with accounts payable. I have the two of them working together. This is a very slow process, a little tedious, as I'm having them go through each lane to verify the accuracy, verify map numbers, the individual, the address. Some of them are old, so just trying to make sure that we have all i's dotted, t's crossed, before pursuing making contact. Since January, up through July 31st of this year, we have collected over $15,000, just in liens. It's been out there, which that looks small compared to the total number, but we're getting there. We're making some progress. Just this month alone, through today, actually, we've collected 1,100 more in liens. So they have done great work. We're still continuing, got a lot more to pursue, but we're making progress. So personal property tax, we started also the collection with that in January. We did start out with letters being mailed, making contact with individuals. And we also started the process for setting them access for debt set-off with the state. And I think this had been utilized before with taxes. That was before I came, and I don't think it was continued with. But we have been utilizing for debt set-off for utility. This, I'm going to explain a little bit about debt set-off. In 1983, the General Assembly enacted legislation authorizing the state agencies to set off Virginia income tax refunds due to individuals with past due amounts. And this is also in addition to Virginia lottery winnings. In excess of $600 are also subject for the debt set-off. And November 1st, claims, any delinquent account that we have for personal property tax can be submitted electronically for the next participating year. And a participating year is January 1 through December 31st. The claims are given the following priority for matching. The Department of Taxation, Child Support Enforcement, State Agencies, Authorities, Boards, and Courts, Local Department of Social Services, Counties, Cities, Towns, and Local Authority. And this process is quite lengthy. There is time management that we have to watch and adhere to, because if we do not meet the deadlines, then we do lose the funds that could possibly be seized to collect for the delinquent accounts. So just to give a little history of what all this entails, the state, once that we submit the file, beginning of the year, when people start filing their tax returns, if there is a match to the individual, the state will notify us of that match. We have ten days to notify the debtor in writing that Virginia Tax is withholding funds. The debtor has thirty days to contest the validity of the debt before they are seized. And the town has to certify to Virginia Tax by the 10th calendar day from the match date that the debtor has been notified. If the certification is not done within the ten-day period, we forfeit our right to the funds. If the claim is contested by the debtor, we must update the contest date, and we are required to update every thirty days. If it is not contested, then we have sixty days from the match date to finalize the match. Upon finalizing, that is when we can determine the exact dollar amount that is to be withheld. The debt set-off fee for each claim, if they have multiple accounts, is $25 per claim, and 4% is to the Virginia Tax. The state will notify the debtor in writing of the final disposition. And the first week of each month, we will receive notification of the payment that we are to receive, and the breakdown of how it should be dispersed to the accounts. Now, I will tell you before I get into the numbers, this is the first year that this has been done. It was new to all of us in finance, and when I tell you that, it was overwhelming. That is an understatement. It was a huge undertaking. It did not help that four out of seven in the finance department got COVID. So it really was a test, but I have an amazing staff. They were all hands on deck. Everyone helped in any way possible so that we would not lose funds and could work through it. So.
Drumroll.
The total collection for the personal property, just the delinquent, was over $61,000. Interest was over 20, with penalty over 28, giving a total tax collection of $110,604.60. Utility collection that we received through debt set-off was over $16,000, and with debt set-off fee for taxes and utility was over 30. So the total overall collection was $159,687.99. And when I first mentioned this to Ms. Burcham, I had talked to her about possibly looking into doing away with the physical town decal sticker that went on sale every spring. And her first reaction was, how are you going to offset the revenue that we have adopted into the budget? So this was my goal for debt set-off. At the time when it was presented to you, we were looking at the collection we had received so far with real estate. But as you can see, debt set-off took care of what had been anticipated with the budget and the revenue to offset this. So it has paid off. It has been a lot of hard work. And I appreciate my staff greatly for all of the hard work and time and effort that they put in. So does anyone have any questions or comments, anything so far?
So how much of the past due, I mean, obviously, we saw out of the $400,000 for the liens, but how much of the past due, like, property and personal, I mean, what percentage would you say have we gotten through of the delinquents? Is this like forty? Is this like forty percent, seventy percent, ten percent?
To be honest, I don't have an exact percentage amount. Um, I haven't looked at the overall total. Um, honestly, I've been focused on the revenue that was.
Yeah, I don't know, and it's it's a great job. I've just, I was just curious, like, Ada, how much of it had you knocked out, because?
We currently, um, I know Ms. Brooks is working on, um, as of July one, we still have a remaining balance of a hundred and ninety thousand delinquent, just in personal property.
Okay.
Real estate, I don't have a total.
So you put a pretty sizable dent in it, at least the personal property.
And a lot of that, too, was accounts. We did clean up a lot. Not only did we collect, but we did clean up because you had people, they will move, and they don't change their registration, so it still shows them in the town of Pulaski. So by notifying them or their taxes being withheld, then they can clean that up. All, you know, they just have to get information from DMV, work with the Commissioner of Revenue's Office, and take care of it that way. So we were able to clean up a lot of accounts as well.
Good.
And in terms of your real estate tax, we can only go back twenty years on delinquencies, and then we have to write off in the twentieth year the taxes that are still uh not collected.
Right.
That are due. Um, and what Jackie has not mentioned in detail is that virtually none of this was being done um until we had the opportunity to really split personal property and real estate into two individuals. And that was a pilot to begin with, and it was so successful that uh we made those assignments permanent to those individuals. We had been doing, but very slowly and without a lot of conscious effort, the real estate and personal property. But these other ideas, debt set off and concentrating on liens, kind of was brand new to the organization. So I can't say enough to reinforce what Jackie is saying about her staff. Uh, they really have made it their goal to maximize uh the revenues that we are entitled to have. And candidly, um, every resident should support that because if they have to pay it, so should the next person have to pay it. But there were a lot of records that needed cleaning up, and we found in the case of liens uh that not always, when property was transferred, did those checking those records take care of liens, which are supposed to be handled at the time of a transfer? So we had lots of discussions with individuals who claimed, I never knew about that, or it wasn't settled when I uh bought the property. So um not everyone was always pleasant in their conversations with the finance staff about any of these issues, particularly when somebody had plans for their uh tax refund and suddenly found that uh we had access to some portion of that.
And we did offer for individuals, once they were made aware, you know, they had the option to come in and pay the tax. That avoided the fee and the four percent going to the state. So they did have that option as well. Um, something we did start venturing into, but with overwhelming response of debt set off, that was uh DMV stops. Um, that is a little more complex setup process. Um, they had issues with their online site. We had trouble getting in, we had trouble with logins. In between that, I had some staff to um take other positions. And at that time, it was the brunt of tax season, so we really didn't have time to dive into that too much. And that's almost, DMV stops I look at as a last resort because then you are placing holds on individuals' um registration renewals, tags, anything of that nature pertaining to that vehicle. So that is something that I'm going to start getting back into and getting set up and get ready for uh the first of next year, to have that in place.
I have a, just a comment when uh Jackie, when uh Ms. Bircham actually come to us and said that she had someone she wanted to try over finance, and she brought you up, then you guys been around town, like Greg, we we knew it wasn't try. We knew you was gonna do it, you could do it, and you've done a wonderful job. And it's the staff that you accumulated down there, so, you know, they're they're very good, some been here for years. So you got a good sort, but I have one question for you. I go back many, many years. I think this is the only male that's ever worked in finance. Am I wrong?
Since I've been there. I don't know.
I don't know, I've. He didn't last long, y'all run him off. Well, I wanted to tell this, what I want to tell the gentleman right here, it's a better while you're fast because you ran a bunch of women, oh. You're good, good luck, team. She's got great people to work with. We'll do good, thank you. Thank you, Jackie.
You're welcome, thank you. So um we'll move on beyond revenue. Um, in May, I had a representative from VML, Vaco Corporation, who come, which is an investment firm that's established by Virginia Municipal League and the Virginia Association of Counties. His presentation, presentation touched on financing and municipal advisory, equipment lease purchase program, and the Virginia Investment Pool. After I met with him, I shared the information with Ms. Bircham that he provided, and she wanted me to schedule another meeting with him, so we called, asked him to come back, and he briefly went over the presentation, and before basically he could get through, Darlene was already asking, where can we sign? Um, so one, uh, they offered two investment opportunities which sparked our interest. One is the VIP Stable Liquidity Pool, which is designed for funds that may be needed immediately or for which maintaining a stable new asset value is important, or a one-to-three-year quality bond fund, and this is for funds that are expected to be invested for one year or longer. The one that really uh we showed interest to was for the liquidity pool. And so um currently, our concentrated account that maintains the majority of the funds for the town is with a local bank earning a rate of point-six percent on approximately seven to eight million monthly balance. So our average interest that we receive each month is three to four thousand dollars. So under the advisement of Ms. Bircham, I opened an account with the investment pool and transferred two million dollars on the twenty-first of July. And with this account, you have a high competitive yield of a traditional money market fund. You do have daily liquidity, which is a two P M cutoff for same-day funds. If you need to transfer from that account into your regular account, um, as long as it's by two o'clock, it will be in your account same day. There is no minimum balance, there is no maintenance fees, there's no transfer fees, and you're able to establish um unlimited separate accounts should you choose to do so. And they do post their daily yields at the website listed. Um, this next slide is part of part, his presentation to show us um how the uh from two thousand and twenty-two to present, the daily net yields. As you can see, in January of two thousand and twenty-two, it's at a low percentage. In April of two thousand and twenty-three, it was up to five point one seven percent that you could earn as the daily net yield. With doing the transfer of the two million dollars, by the end of July, July thirty-first, we received a statement. During that timeframe of about ten days, I don't know if you're going to be able to see the numbers very well, they're sort of small. Um, but it's in that ten-day period, we had earned two thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety cent on just the two million dollars. Um, and this was with a yield of five point three-two percent. So with this, we are looking, um, are interested in um transferring additional funds, which could be used as reserve funds. Um, as you know, with fund balance, the uh Government Finance Officer Association states that you should have no less than two months of revenue or seventeen percent in fund balance. Our auditors recommend fifteen to twenty percent. The fund balance um at the audit presentation for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two had us at twenty-nine percent for our fund balance, which was an increase of seven percent from fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one. Of course, the fund balance for fiscal year twenty-three is still pending our audit, which is um due to be completed by the end of October. So um pending the results of that, we would like to consider opening up additional accounts and transferring funds over. Um, I feel that you can leave the fund balance at the recommended amount that the auditors are stating or requesting that you leave it at, but also take advantage of the growth that we have had over the last several years. This could be put into accounts where it could earn a higher yield, which would help fund if we have unexpected expenses, emergencies, um, any expenses as far as other departments. In a few years, we're going to have to be paying for a fire truck. I'm sure not long after that, there will be another one following suit. Um, filter plant, public works, police department, the municipal building in its sale, or if there's projects within the town that we want to look at doing. This is a way to have our funds grow um and make that money available to future things that we look to want to do. So um, is there any questions, any comments?
Jackie, you may want to also mention that in addition to uh the opportunity to have our funds invested at a much higher yield. Uh, and now you, now you know why I said, where do I sign up? As soon as we saw some of this information. Uh, they do offer some consulting services that we intend to take advantage of as well. Uh, and we will be asking them to come in probably this fall and take us through um a long-term finance, financial investment plan for the town, particularly because of the items that Jackie mentioned that are going to be large investments uh into our infrastructure uh in the future. So that's a part of the service, and and that is something that we receive uh as part of our, what I'll call, membership um in the organization, and that is an nominal amount that we know will uh has probably already been recovered uh in terms of what we have already earned in interest in just a short period of time. So as soon as we have the audit completed and we know um from the auditor's standpoint what our fund balance is, it is our intent to invest anything over that percentage uh into a separate fund that would be designated as fund balance versus um our ARPA money or some other activity, and let that grow and continue to increase the fund balance.
And I did, I was curious, and I did check the balance today um to see where we were at, and it, right now, we have earned six thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars. So, and we have just a few days left to go for a full thirty-day um with that account, so.
And Jackie, you you may have said it, and I just missed it, about the organization, could you give us a little more background on the organization?
Mm-hmm. Um, it, um, get back on my notes here a little bit. So this firm, it's VML Vaco, which is an investment firm that was established by the Virginia Municipal League and the Virginia Association of Counties. Um, don't, let me slide back here.
I think their portfolio is two billion dollars, is that, am I remembering that correctly? And actually, um, most of the jurisdictions that we're familiar with have been involved in this organization for some period of time. Um, and I'm not sure how this gentleman necessarily found us uh to make the inquiry uh with Jackie to have that first meeting. I think she said in in May, uh, but then he was actually in Withville um at a conference uh of members of this organization and came to make the presentation to us. So uh they have a very solid track record, and what was, as you can see, very appealing to us was the liquidity of this one fund, so that we don't have to worry about waiting for money. Um, and even with our CDs, you have penalties for early withdrawal, uh, which is not the case.
You can pull that money anytime you need to or want to, within the, within a twenty-four-hour period, essentially. Great, good stuff.
So your finances in his, his great hands.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
And Jackie, I think you had, did you have copies that you wanted to pass out to them to have?
If you would like a copy, you can read over.
I would.
And I do have, um, anyone interested in the information that the gentleman's provided, I can give you copies for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I know how hard that is when you file like three hundred dollar liens and stuff like that. I understand how that's a lot of just grinding through paperwork and stuff that's written very sloppily by hand and, okay, good.
It's still a lot of work, even if you love it.
Thank you for all your hard work.
All right, now we'll move on to the public hearing. The first one is Resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash three-nine, Reappropriation Carry Forward for F Y twenty, twenty-two-three, twenty-two-four Budget. Um, and could I get the staff report, I guess, from you, Ms. Bircham?
Yes, sir. Uh, this is a, an annual event um that particularly as it relates to grant funds was done for the first time uh last year when we were advised by the auditors that we should, in addition to having separate accounts that keep those funds solely for the purpose of that particular grant, that we should carry forward those funds uh to the next fiscal year. So you see in the resolution actually uh three categories, uh the reappropriation of grant funds, the uh carry forward of certain uh smaller checking accounts that we have, and then finally, the carryover funds uh from individual accounts uh that we had in the last year's budget for which we had funds available that could be appropriated into the next fiscal year. So you see three different uh totals on that, and um be happy to have Jackie answer any particular questions you have about any individual items. But I think the most impressive part of this is the first third, which shows you the number of grants that we are currently managing um as a small community. And actually, since uh the beginning of the fiscal year, we've been advised of uh another grant uh that will be the subject of appropriation at your next meeting. So uh the effort to find additional grant funds to help us carry out the work of the community uh is clearly a priority for us.
Can I just ask one semi-related question? Did we put the Brookmont project out for bid yet?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Actually, it's under construction.
Okay, good, that's what I thought. Um, and then direct injection, is that true, that too, or?
Yes, in fact, they are by the same contractor, W G K.
Great.
Doing them both, and actually is having the benefit of having his crews in the area working on both. So some days, those crews are over at the Brookmont project, other days, they're at uh the Hardy project.
Those are all on time and look like gonna be completed in the.
Well.
I mean, as soon as they can be, obviously.
The only delay has been uh materials.
Okay.
How long it takes for materials to uh be acquired. In the case of the direct injection project, uh the contractor actually ordered uh the tank months before it was needed in order to try to avoid some delay. We do expect both those projects to be completed within a reasonable period of time, but there is a couple of months delay on both in terms of the original agreement.
Thank you. Counsel, have any other questions?
Nope.
Okay, uh, if not, I will open the public hearing. And if there's anyone that. Jackie? If not, I'll close the public hearing. And then is there any other questions before we, if one of you wants to make a motion?
Mister Mayor, I move we approve Resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash thirty-nine uh the reappropriating carry forward for the fiscal year.
for the fiscal year 2023-24 budget as written.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please, ma'am?
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
All right. Next one is Resolution 2023-40, Appropriation of Funds to the IRF Grant Brewery. May I have the staff, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, you'll recall at your last meeting, the council agreed that the town would supply an additional $25,000 to the brewery project, given that we were limited in the amount of state funds that were available to 750,000. And after several months of work, we have come up with a proposed contract in the amount of 790,000, which left us $40,000 short. The county of Pulaski, as well as the county EDA, have agreed to provide $25,000 each to both make up that $15,000 shortfall on the initial contract, as well as to have a very, very small amount available for contingency should it be needed. It was the county's request that the town's money go in first, and their money would be the last in, and obviously, if there's no draw on the contingency, then we would not use their funds, but we want to go ahead and appropriate those tonight so that we can award the contract and have that contingency available.
Does the council have any questions? Okay. All right. Then we will open the public hearing. As no one's come into the stand, I'll close the public hearing. And then if you have no other questions, if someone would make a motion.
I just have a related question, but not, not necessarily impacting this. Is there a timeframe on the construction for the, for the brewery?
We have not received the revised drawings based upon the reductions. We expected those last Friday, so I'm hoping to have them tomorrow. They will then need to go through a review by a third party, as well as our building official. I'm hoping that we can actually award a contract by the end of this month.
Okay.
And the plan is for there to be a construction period that would get us opening late spring.
Okay. Good stuff. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution 2023-40, Appropriating Funds to IRF Grant Brewery as written.
Second. And may I have a roll call for that?
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Okay. Next is, excuse me, Resolution 2023-41, Amending the Pay and Classification Plan.
Members of Council, we do have several title changes that are being proposed, most notably in the police department ranks. As I understand it, our rank structure doesn't really match or mirror what is typical in the other departments, and so that creates some confusion. It's merely a title change, there's no pay change or grade change, and we also have made some title adjustments for the human resource position, and we removed the community development specialist position, and you'll see all of those highlighted, I believe, on the copy of the attachment that you see with the resolution. So in the case of the police structure, captain is now going to be retitled, subject to your approval, assistant chief. The lieutenants would be titled captains, the sergeants would be titled lieutenants, and the corporals would be titled sergeants.
What's, I, I just want to make sure I understand, the change to the assistant chief, filter plant operator, is that just a new position, or?
Actually, a position that we had previously, in fact, the current chief operator was in that position.
Okay.
And we eliminated it from the pay and classification plan when he moved up, and we've now determined that there's a need to have someone else to be in charge, and that person already is employed in the department, and so we put him into that classification.
All right. Makes sense. Thank you. So it's just addition, like a new role, essentially?
But it was previously a position in the filter plant.
Okay. There are no other questions. Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution 2023-41 as written.
Second. And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
And now we go to the public comment period. I have no speaker slips, so we'll move on to the consent agenda, consideration of August 1st, 2023 Town Council minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt August 1st, 2023 Council Minutes.
Second.
And may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
I'm going to have to abstain, and it's my fault for having not reviewed the minutes, but I don't want to actually vote on something that I literally have not seen. So I, I must have lost them somewhere, and I apologize to everybody for that, because I know it's hard work that goes into it.
All right. Then we will move to council comments. Mr. East, do you have anything?
Mr. Mayor, not this evening, thank you.
Really?
No, I think you're confusing me with Jamie. I know, right?
Mr. Clark?
I don't have anything.
You don't have anything either, right? Mr. Ratliff?
We asked you. No, go. I don't have anything. Thank you.
Mr. Reese?
I just have one quick question, and this is probably not something that can be addressed tonight, but I noticed that the county has a program where they provide the potential for tax abatements, the substantial renovation of commercial buildings, and I noticed that the state code provides that we can do that as a locality for not just commercial, but also residential buildings. And I know that we're focusing on addressing the, the issue of some of these derelict buildings, and, and I know that costs, especially as we're finding now, construction costs are extremely high, and that I think might be something that we could look at at some point. And, and, you know, you can, we can figure out whether we want to do it. I think we can do it by zone or by other places, and I think that would be something we should be looking into if, if possible, because I think it would be a way to help people revitalize some of these, especially some of these older buildings that need a lot of work.
I had previously asked the town attorney to investigate those sections of the code. You can do it for residential, commercial, and industrial.
Which we have a lot of.
And can have different time periods or ages of the buildings, as well as different periods for the rebate. And in fact, Mr. Regus and I just spoke again this morn, this afternoon about that as something that I wanted to make sure we got in front of the council this calendar year.
Great.
So we're working on it.
And, and I don't know how many businesses even in the county are aware of it, because I imagine that's an even bigger chunk of people's property taxes, so.
The county does make that provision as part of their code, but one of the things that we will need to do is work through the commissioner of the revenues office for the application and the fee and those kinds of things. And I've asked the finance director to meet with the commissioner and make sure that they would be, or she would be comfortable with having that as part of her responsibilities for those properties that are in the town, depending on which category or categories we finally decide we want to do. So it's a work in progress, but it's more limited currently in the county. But you're absolutely right. But given the age of our town, we certainly have the older properties in every category, and percentage-wise, certainly more than it would be.
The thing I was most surprised about is that it could be transferable. The code allows you to do that, and that's impressive, because usually we can't do stuff like that. So I thought that was, might be a real selling point for some people, if they could fix up the house and then pass that along, it could be a real selling point for a property. Thank you.
Only thing I have, I have two things. Can we have the Public Works check? I don't know if it's us that would do it, but probably. Right past the hospital, right before you get to the turnoff to go up to that church, going out of town towards McGill, there's a big drop off of the side of the road, I mean, a chunk, like you can see.
Right after, right after you get off the shoulder, it, it's like got washed out or something, so.
You can see where cars have hit and scraped too, so. I just had noticed it. And also, another spot is our parking lot that we rent from the county. Someone has hit one of the corners again, they just need to be set back up. They pulled loose, I don't know if the truck is, went in there and caught it, or if somebody whooped it and just kept on going. Probably a fire truck or some, oh, I'm sorry. Forgot you were here. It was one of those county fire trucks right now. No, that's all that I have tonight, so we'll move on to the manager's report, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to say like the rest of you that I have nothing to.
So it was just me and him?
I think you have heard yet again some excellent presentations from town staff, and I continue to want you all to realize how very special the people are that you have working on your behalf. I think enough has been said tonight that demonstrates that.
Yeah, I agree. We have the best of the best, that's for sure. We sure do.
We just mentioned, though, that we had a ribbon cutting last Thursday of the Crest Hill Tea Room, and if, it seems like most people don't realize where that is located, but it is in the building that formerly was Oscar's hot dog stand, but they had a great turnout for the ribbon cutting. Mr. Reese was there representing the council, as was Mr. Regus and several of the town's staff. But they have an excellent operation, and I hope that everybody will take the opportunity to visit there. I understand they had 60-plus people come to their open house on Saturday, and we know that we're going to have a couple more eatery types joining us in the downtown over the next 30 days, and so I think the town is coming back big time.
Might remind people that we did not get in this bad a shape overnight, so it takes a little while.
It probably does.
But we're getting there, and I think we're making leaps and bounds right now, actually. I think we're doing really good, and we'll continue to with, with all of our good people here, our town too. All right. With that, just a reminder that our next meeting is September 5th, 2023. Closed session will start at 6:00 and open session at 7:00. As there's nothing else on my agenda, I declare this meeting adjourned.